Okay, we'll call them into orders. Evidence of proper notice.
The county board of supervisors, September nineteenth meeting and notice, meeting notice and agenda was posted in the government center building in two places, posted on the county website on September eighth, twenty twenty-three, was published in the legal newspaper the week of September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, published date of September fourteenth. In addition, on Friday, September ninth, twenty twenty-three, at twelve oh eight P M., the office of the county clerk distributed copies of such notice of meeting to supervisors and media via email or mail. The notice of amended agenda was posted in the government center, posted on the county website, and copies of such notice of meeting were distributed to the supervisors and media via email or mail on Thursday, September fourteenth.
On, sir.
That complies with the open meetings law requirements.
Roll call.
All right, Brad Olson.
Here.
Doug Rowdy.
Here.
Steve Warrenal.
Here.
Ryan Wood.
Here.
Tracy LeBlanc.
She's excused if she's not on, she has COVID.
Uh, Dan Ruck.
Here.
Barbara McAfee.
Here.
Jeremy Hall.
Here.
Kim O'Connell.
Here.
Amy Middleton.
Here.
Jay Luke.
Here.
Denise Lalié-Pray.
Here.
Russ Arcand.
Here.
C J Semenez.
Here.
And John Bonner Prize.
Here.
That is fourteen out of fifteen.
Okay, please join me with.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Need a motion on the agenda.
Make sure I approve the agenda and then I'm seeing.
We have second?
Second.
Seconded, all in favor?
Uh, aye.
All the same side? Matters, uh, offered for adoption for the, there's one resolution, forty-one, twenty-three, from the town of Beavure. Need a motion on the considerations.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
A and B are presented, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All the same side, any public comment tonight?
There's no public comment in the West Conference room, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, we'll move along then. To the resolutions. First resolution is thirty-nine, twenty-three. For, uh, accepting the donation from the Eagle Scout, would like to make a motion on that.
If we're more.
Motion to accept, seconded. 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 All right, okay, any comments? Discussion?
I'd just say, if I may.
Go ahead.
Wanted to bring this up because, you know, we're always happy when we have somebody achieve Eagle Scout, and not only did he build a deer stand, handicap accessible deer stand in Sterling, but the remaining funds from his project, he wanted to donate to the maintenance of that. So Alex Kegley, congratulations to him and thank him for his contribution.
Is there irrepresentative from that organization here, right?
I don't believe.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing is, you know, we went out there and met.
Yep.
I went out, took the county chairman from Sterling out there.
Okay.
We met and looked at it and met the family out there. I brought a wheelchair with so you could make sure everything's right for a wheelchair and, and it's a good project, I think it'll be.
How old is the young man?
Well, he's gonna be an Eagle Scout, so he's sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, I'd say somewhere there.
Yeah.
Awesome, great, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same sign. Okay, need a motion or somebody to look at? Resolution forty, twenty-three, donation from, uh, Norm, Norman and Norma. Reed. On the D D, for the D D Kennedy and the maintenance.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved made and seconded. Favor?
Aye.
All the same side? No discussion, thank you. Me as a whole, discussion on the M U, M U on the Fair Association, Fair Society, I mean.
So I gave Claire a PowerPoint. I don't know if you want to hear my history of how we got here first, especially for those who are newer to the board, who haven't been here and don't have that institutional memory. Um, I'm willing to do that, but I'm also willing to have the committee, um, have, you know, announce sort of where we are, and it depends, however you want to approach that, but I'm prepared.
Well.
I'll make a motion to go into the committee of the whole.
Do we, yeah, we have a motion now.
Second.
You have a second?
Yeah, the second.
Steve, all in favor?
Aye.
All the same side, now.
Now we can go.
Now we can, uh, I would assume we should.
I think he knows more about it than we.
Get an update, update on what, uh, where we're standing right now. Uh, who would we have make that presentation?
I'm.
You want to make it?
I'm prepared to. Created a PowerPoint.
Go ahead, why don't you give us a, uh, update?
You control the moving forward thing, right? All right, so, and you can go immediately to the second slide. All right, so nineteen seventy-five, year I was born, so it's a year that means a lot to me. Um, the Fair Society, uh, made a deed for one dollar and other valuable consideration and, uh, sold the fairgrounds, or what we know as the portion of the fairgrounds that is owned by Polk County, uh, to Polk County. Uh, the Fair Society owns other smaller parcels near it and around it, but the main part, when I, when I say the fairgrounds, I'm talking only about the fairgrounds as it relates to what the county owns. And so, um, that happened in nineteen seventy-five, and that same year, the county and the society entered into an agreement. We use the word M O U, memorandum of understanding, it just means an agreement, a contract, a lease, whatever you want to call it. Um, and at that time, uh, the goal was to make sure we had a fair society that could maintain a wonderful fair, and I think we all can agree that the fair that we have in Polk County is, is one of the best, and, and both parties agree that that's something that we want to keep going. Uh, in two thousand and three, both parties revised that original M O U from nineteen seventy-five. Um, one of the things to keep in mind about this two thousand and three agreement is that it creates what is a perpetual lease, a lease that has no end date, um, or at least it purports to. And al- also, it didn't have any information about, well, what if, you know, what if the county starts messing things up and the fair wants out, or what if the society says, hey, uh, the society starts doing, uh, things, maybe somebody on the board, you know, was nefarious with their funds, and I'm not saying anybody did that, but imagine what if, how can we have an agreement where there's no way for either party to get out of that agreement? And so that's one of the things that exist in the M O U from two thousand and three. Jump forward to November twenty eighteen, uh, it was budget night for the county board, and outside of the budget resolution, the county board decided to, um, approve a recommendation to authorize uh, the development of a grandstand, and within that resolution, there was a dollar amount, I believe it was one point three million dollars, and there was, uh, information about how the Fair Society was going to put a down payment to contribute towards the cost of the grandstand and then make annual payments to the county. Um, but it was not included in the budget resolution, so there was no funds actually appropriated, and everyone in the room was aware that there were no funds, this was a resolution about an intention. That same night, the county board passed a resolution saying, we've got this M O U, it needs to be updated, things like a lease that goes on forever and no out clauses, it's not healthy for either party, so we want to renegotiate. Also, the county was looking at investing, um, quite a bit of money into this grandstand. And so they wanted to make sure that there were some assurances, uh, from both sides. Then we jumped to March of twenty nineteen, so the next year, there was another resolution by the county board looking at funding options and ways to finance the grandstand project. In October of that year, uh, there was another resolution authorizing, uh, moving forward with the grandstand project. It wasn't, uh, something that could happen overnight, it took planning. Uh, originally, the Fair Society asked for a three thousand seat grandstand, which was twice the size, twice the capacity of the one that used to be there, and just for some historical context, the reason the one that used to be there is no longer there, it was deemed unsafe and needed to be torn down. Uh, so that's how we got to the place where we needed a new grandstand for the Polk County fairgrounds. Uh, and the Fair Society said, look, we want something a little bigger, because these are very popular events, we also want to host some other events, and the Fair Society asked for an N T P A track, um, and again, this larger grandstand. Because of the large size and the nature of what the request was, it would not fit in with the setback, in other words, the zoning regulations as they exist in the city of Saint Cray Falls, which is where the Fair Soci- or, excuse me, the fairgrounds is located. So, working with Cedar Corps, the, uh, county staff determined another place for this grandstand. Uh, and anyway, things were rolling, and we were, at that point, once we started there, how much money have we spent on the grandstand project?
It was approximately ninety-seven thousand, but all those meetings on relocating with the want of a double track, uh, and P, and T P A track, um, all those planning meetings with, uh, Cedar Corps and all that, the fair was involved at all those meetings. Um, they had input on all that, on where the, where the grandstands would go, how the track would look, uh, that project then would address the water issues at the fair, it also, um, addressed the watering meter problems at the fair um, with new water metering pits, so, and then a new entrance coming out onto Simonsen, and along with the village, the village was gonna upgrade Simonsen at that time with curb and gutter, as it came out to be one way in and one way out, so the fair, so that was all done, um, in conjunction with the Fair Society at those meetings and at the design meetings.
Also, in January twenty twenty, uh, so going forward in our timeline, that's when the county proposed its draft of opening the negotiations for this new, uh, future M O U, we sent it. At that time, Chad Roberts, the former general government division, division director, Mo and myself were the negotiating team, and we had members of the fair board, uh, I think including Tracy at, at that time, from the county board, uh, where we all met, we met, you can go to the next slide. Uh, we met with the fair board in twenty twenty, um, to the, to discuss the M O U, we asked for financial information, audit information, so that we met again in March of twenty twenty. Uh, going through all of the emails regarding the Fair Society M O U negotiations, um, I was able to see that, uh, Mo would reach out to the Fair Society, at least monthly, but usually more like weekly, say, hey, we gave you this M O U, we're wondering, uh, what you think of it, have you guys thought about it? Eventually, uh, the president of the fair board in April said, we should have a response soon. Al- also during this time, as we talked about, uh, the new grandstand was gonna be bigger and host what might be, uh, larger events, N T P A track, uh, special events, so the city determined, the city of Saint Cray Falls determined that they would require a C U P, that's a conditional use permit. It's a zoning application, for those of you who are on, on the environmental services committee or a local plan commission, you know what a C U P is, and so they said, hey, you're gonna have to apply for this con- conditional use permit. Um, and again, I want to reiterate that at no time did the county say, the county would like an N T P A track, at no time did the county say, we think we should have a three thousand seat grandstand, we were following, uh, the request of the Fair Society, and, um, because there were citizen complaints, uh, concerns at the conditional use hearing for the city of Saint Cray Falls, the folks who live near the fairgrounds worried about the noise, the C U P process got on, put on hold. Um, then all of a sudden, in April of twenty twenty-one, uh, after Mo had requested one more time, hey, is there any update on our request for you to respond to our opening of the C U, excuse me, the M O U negotiations? And at that point, the president of the Fair Society said, we've reached an impasse and we're going to hire legal counsel. All right, Claire, next slide. This is a copy of that email where, um, Mo is asking, morning Janice, any update on the information? And, um, and I can share this if anybody wants a copy of this, I know it's really tiny to read, um, but I thought it was important just to say, at this point, we went from, um, looking at a C U P and working, uh, with Cedar Corps to two months later saying that they've hired le- legal counsel. Next slide. This is Mo's response to the request for legal counsel, I think Mo and I were both under the impression that this attorney was going to step in to help them negotiate the M O U. Um, and so that's what was communicated back to the Fair Society, well, maybe this will help us further the negotiations regarding the M O U. All right, next slide. The next event after that was the letter from Max Newhouse, an attorney hired by the Fair Society, and I put up here some quotations because I think they're really important, and these come directly from the letter, and I can provide the letter, most of you already have it, to show that I'm not taking anything out of context. The first quote is where Mr. Newhouse says, "The grandstand that we, the Fair Society, asked you for isn't what we want lo- long term." This was the first time we ever heard that they no longer want a three thousand seat grandstand, and they no longer want an N T P A track. Second part of the quotations here is the quote where this attorney alleges that the county and the Cedar, and Cedar Corps without advanced knowledge or input from the Fair Society, went before the city of Saint Cray Falls Planning Commission and presented a C U P application with misinformation. That is absolutely not true. I have emails here, I didn't want to just keep flipping emails. This is from Mo DeJanice on February fourth, twenty twenty-one. "Morning, Janice, I see the planning commission at, has met on February first to address the fair C U P, could you provide an update on the status of the C, C U P and how the meeting went?" Janice replied, "Good morning, Mo, the meeting went great, lots of questions asked of us, just waiting for the public hearing, and then for them to make recommendations for the city council." So again, this attorney in this email says that we, as the county, and Cedar Corps asked for the C U P, and that's just absolutely not true. Another quote from this letter is that the Fair Society has determined that the relationship in its current state with the county can no longer continue, and that's similar to the final quote. "We want a separate arrangement." When I had a phone call with Max Newhouse and said, "The county doesn't want to divorce from the Fair Society," we both had the same goal of having a wonderful Polk County fair, he said, "It's, it's a divorce, and I feel like, you know, we've got irreconcilable differences." Um, but he went back and asked his client, so we again started to try to see if we could come to the table, but at this point, the Fair Society's attorney has said they wanted to be done with us. All right, next slide. May of twenty twenty-one, that's when I came before the board at the time, shared this letter from Max Newhouse, gave another presentation about how we had gotten to that point. And then, uh, the next thing we received from the fair was in November of twenty twenty-one with a new attorney, Rory O'Sullivan, same law firm, uh, saying, hey, if you don't give in to our demands, which was, uh, giving them back the fairgrounds for a dollar, uh, paying them several hundred thousand dollars or, uh, excuse me, over a million dollars for a grandstand, plus paying several hundred thousand dollars for other things, uh, we're gonna sue you for all of these things. So, again, we reached out and said, "We don't want to litigate, we really do truly want to work something out with the Fair Society where everybody benefits going forward." The next slide. So, twenty twenty-two to where we are now, um, the executive committee met several times with the Fair Society and their representative, Mr. O'Sullivan. Um, sometimes the committee would work on, on their own, uh, in closed session, other times we would have long, long meetings where we sat kind of on the opposite side and went back and forth, point by point, through the different drafts. In March, uh, Attorney O'Sullivan sent to the county a redline version of the M O U. And then the executive committee over the summer, uh, at some of our meetings, we met. I met with Mr. Warrenal, we went through point by point, so remember, this was the M O U draft that their attorney sent to us. We made a few changes. We defined what ordinary and routine maintenance would be, uh, or, uh, so that, you know, when there are big projects that involve things that need li- licensed professionals, that the county would be involved in those decisions, but if they wanted to paint, they could do that, just kind of really explaining how some of that joint decision making would work on those more important things. Uh, but basically, this was their draft. One key difference was, we put an end date for this agreement, so a one-year lease of the fairgrounds with a requirement that the county and the Fair Society meet to extend it. Make sure everything goes well, because the whole goal was, was to start off, like a brand-new start on a new foot. Um, this was by decision of the executive committee, a final best offer, kind of like highest and best in real estate. Um, so the committee was saying, look, we feel like we've basically agreed to all of these things that you are recommending, these are the things that are important to us, so take it or leave it. And, uh, the day before the last executive meeting, received an email, uh, from Attorney O'Sullivan. In the email, he, and I can share the full email with you, but he says, "The county still seems to believe that the fairgrounds belong to it." Well, it, it does. Um, and he also indicated that while he had issues with a lot of the M O U, which is interesting, because it was mostly his draft, the biggest issue was this one-year, uh, term. All right, next slide. So I said, okay, the one year bothers you, do you know what your client is looking for as far as a term length for the M O U, how many years? Three, five, ten, twenty? I can ask them to make sure, but I'm pretty sure they want it to be perpetual. That's one of the main reasons we got into the issue that we're in right now. A term length has to be something that's reasonable, there's provisions within the law, even the Wisconsin State Constitution that go against things that require a lease in perpetuity, because think about it. If there is a lease in perpetuity, it's really just a the landlord has absolutely no control, especially if there are no provisions within the agreement, the lease, the M O U, the contract, that say, if this, then you can get out of it, so that's where we are. Um, one of the things to consider, I think that's the last slide, right? One of the things to consider is right now, the biggest legal argument, and if we want to, if you ask questions about strategy, we'll go into closed session, but the biggest legal argument is, is the current M O U, and by current, is it the one that we last agreed to, that two thousand and three? Is that something that the Fair Society can try to enforce? Well, absolutely, they can try to enforce it, but the likelihood of them prevailing on that, I don't think is very good. Based in part on the letter from Max Newhouse saying, we're done, we're out, we no longer want to be in this agreement, we're ready to be out, but also because the provisions of that document are contrary to law in several ways. Uh, because of the perpetuity of the lease, and because of the, uh, fact that it has no way for either party to, eh, get out, even if there's um, bad actions on either side or a breach. So, that's where we are right now. We, as the, uh, executive committee, provided that sort of final best, they've said no. We know their biggest issue is that, that term length, it was a year. So now, because the executive committee cannot bind the full county on this, now it's before you, as, as a board. So we set it for, um, committee of the whole, so you could have kind of a frank, uh, conversation, discussion about it.
You know, I, I continue to encourage them to, you know, sign the agreement, move, and move on. I met with their vice president a couple times about it, I took the copies to her and we went over them, the redline version that came from their attorney and their, and the, uh, final draft that Lee and I put together. I did that right to the end, and, you know, instead of the board making the decision, they decided to go to the society and have them, help them with the decision. Well, to me, that would be like we go into committee of the whole without that presentation she just gave, okay?
Yeah.
The people that aren't involved in this thing right from the start really don't, don't know what, you know, so, you know, they decided to do that. And today, I met with their vice president, just because I happened to be in the mill getting something, and, uh, you know, I told her it's gonna be an open session, and well, you know, yeah, kind of just like you did, okay? You took it to your whole crowd, we're taking it to our whole crowd.
Yeah.
You know, and discuss it, figure out, like, uh, Jay said, the committee doesn't have the authority. You know, we, we worked on it, we feel we've done due diligence with it, and now it's county board's decision.
So it looks like we've got to make a decision particularly on the, uh, a date that this, this M O U, uh, has got to be renegotiated, let's be. And that's one, that's probably the biggest issue that we have, is it not? As far as conversation that you've had?
Right, my conversations with Rory that have all been through email, um, their biggest issue is the fact that there was that one year, I think we set it as December twenty twenty-four. Um, so maybe a little more than a year, but that there was that end date and a requirement to renegotiate.
Okay, and as I recall, the, the executive meeting, that three years in that that empty blank that they left on their M O U was, seemed to be the general consensus of the executive committee, is that accurate?
No.
What do you think? What did you?
I said one, because that's.
You said one year.
Best practice of our M O U's countywide is one year. I mean, we should, they're under the county, they should.
Stick to one year.
County, they should be under the, the county, purchasing everything. I mean, that's why we have policies.
Kim, is that, is the, uh, conditional use permit, is that, is that included in the M O U?
No.
Is that something that they have to do annually?
No. That was only if they wanted that big of a grandstand.
Oh, because of the increase in.
In size and everything, so that's all.
So that kind of like start this whole steamrolling thing crashing down to the. I think that would be speculation, but just to be clear, in their communications now with the executive committee and to my office, they no longer want the larger grandstand, now they only want a fifteen-hundred-seat grandstand in the old footprint, and the city has informed them, they would not need a C U P for that.
Mr. Chair, can we?
Go ahead.
For some of you new people, I was on the delegate to the fair committee before Steve got on the board. And so, the, the Fair Society, probably some of you don't know what the Fair Society is. The Fair Society is made up in districts, and there's a representative from each district, I don't remember the, how many districts.
And there's a representative from each district. I don't remember how many districts. But I think there's at least ten. Do you know how many districts, Steve?
Fifteen people on the board. Five of them are the executive committee, so ten would probably be correct.
And so the unfortunate thing here is the the uh total representatives on the society don't know what's going on. Uh this I think it was probably about seventeen. One of the guys from one of these districts came to the board and said that uh the fair should be sanctioned by the national tractor pulling contest. So they can build up points. They run a point system, same as truck pullers do. And so he's the one that made the proposal for a double track and uh and all the things that they had to do to qualify for the national tractor pulling basic uh basic rules. So and that was, it it just went from there to the uh to the a couple of the board members. Now, this last fair, uh we were all invited to the Friday Friday night uh open house or whatever. And Mary Berkland is the treasurer for the fair. And I asked Mary uh uh, you know, just offer the cup like that, Mary, how's things going with the with the uh progress on the on the fair society? And she told me she did not know anything about this lawsuit when I told her, you know, there's we're trying to get an agreement and and there, she didn't know that there was attorneys or anything. So Steve, as far as I know, it's it's the president, Janice Larson, and the vice president and but it's it's not a group that's in agreement. It it's society, there's a couple of couple of folks leading the society and it's it doesn't seem as though it brought to the whole board because there's a lot of represented, I talked to several more that are in these districts. Don't know a thing about it, don't know what we're talking about. So it's, I think we're dealing with with some people here that uh that don't, I know they don't have full representation or agreement from from the society, but so I just want to fill that in. Okay, yeah, go ahead, Steve.
In in fairness to them, the sports complex put a big damper on this. They thought for sure that sports complex is going to go on that property and they were going to be SOL. In fact, there were county board members out in the public saying that land's going to be sold. So you know, they get this kind of feedback back and that's what contributes to the the problem, you know. So, you know, in their defense, there's been a lot of innuendos, comments, backstabbing, however you want to call it, from some county board members that undermine some of this too. So I, you know, I'm just saying in fairness to them, you know.
Well, we're at a point where we've got to make a decision or this will go on forever and ever and ever. Without a date certain, so.
Mr. Chair, can I just add, because I know we had sort of thrown up our hands at at executive where we had kind of in this one year, two year, five year, three year conversation. And that's what we said, okay, let's come back to the board with this. Because Kim was like, okay, one year, that's what a lot of our MOU say. Other of us were saying this is an extremely complicated situation. It's not your normal MOU. The fairground pieces are so much more complicated than uh you know, I don't know, some simple trail maintenance and shrubbing or something, so I think that's kind of where we got to. It's like, do you want, do you want us to go back and change this date? Um whatever it's called now expires or something, language to a certain year, what is that year? Or do you want us to just stop at this point? I think it's kind of
Well, we had to put a date in there or we wouldn't have a contract, right?
Without without some type of date, it 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 has some issues, yeah.
And what do they want for a date?
They want it in perpetuity.
Forever. One, two, three year deal that is going to satisfy. There there's not.
The only, the only thing I can say to that is if you offer some more reasonable long, much longer, like three years or five or something like that. This board can change, you know, this this county board. And if if the fair society is concerned about folks on this board wanting to do something with the the grounds, I mean, that would be, you know, a different board at a different time. It was even a different board at at that time. And, you know, it was final and best. But if that's the one stickler.
Okay, CJ, what do you have?
Well, can I just ask, so you have, you you've been communicating with their attorney, you yeah, not over the phone, but do you get any sense for why they're they're like a dog with a bone as far as his imperpetuity with as I I mean, I I do contracts for a living too and I I I'd be remiss if I if I uh had a contract out there that just went on without any ability to affect it uh with any kind of a termination date. Why, do you have any idea why they want that so badly and and what they think that advantages them?
I I, yeah.
They want it.
They want, they want it.
Oh, just because?
They want it, period, period, they want it.
And and the advice of their counsel doesn't seem, I gotta think their counsel would be advising them against that.
Advising them that they just hold out, they'll get it. Hold us out, they'll they'll take it away.
But I just don't understand, there's no rational person entering into a contract would want to have a contract in perpetuity. I don't care which side you're on. With, you know, everything that changes, a year from now is a is a lifetime with with contracts. Why do they want something that binds them as as tightly as it would bind the county?
I mean, because it's about the property.
At first, they were against per- perpetuity. Oh, they want it. It wasn't an issue.
Maybe that if it's in perpetuity, we can't end it. And if we can't end it, they can run it without any regard to what we ask. Meaning, when they rent their space out without us knowing about it and don't inform and don't have it insured, who's going to get sued when it burns down or has damage? Us. When they continue to have a fair, when a tornado warning is out like a few years ago and it's recommended they shut it down, get people to security and they don't do it, who's going to get sued? And if we go to them and say, if you're going to wire that building, we want you to use our standards, make sure you have somebody that's a licensed person. Instead of somebody who knows somebody and isn't licensed, we're going to get sued.
That happened when I was
We ask them to comply with how we do things. If we have an, if we cannot end that MOU, they don't have to do a darn thing we tell. Two responses to that. One, the converse is true as well, which is what I don't understand the fair isn't considering. And two, I mean, there statutorily, uh there's there's ways to extricate yourself from a computer if the other party's engaged in, you know, nefarious behavior. So a again, I I don't see I I, my poor mind can't wrap around the rationale for them wanting that, so.
I mean, I think it was key in the email from the attorney when he said the county seems to still be under the belief that they own the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
They think they own it. Well, we have to decide what we're going to do and I thought that the recommendation was to come up with a time certain to fill in that, give it to them. It's an either or situation.
If we're going to talk about what we're going to do, do we need to go into closed session or can we stay in open?
You can stay in open session if you want to. The attorney client privilege is your privilege to have or not have. If you want the discussion in open session, we can have it.
What would you recommend?
My lawyer hats is one thing, my political advisor hats is another. Um I mean, to be completely frank, part of me, if I were a decider, and I'm not, thinks that it's important for the folks who are hearing everything from the fair society side of things to hear what you guys actually talk about, to know what really concerns you, to know that you're not saying, oh, we're going to get them and kick them off in a year and I can't wait to put whatever other thing and sell all of the property. That's what I think some folks believe. And to hear that you're, what you're actually saying and what you're actually concerned about and how you actually got to a decision of saying X number of years or whatever, that it really doesn't come from a place of wanting to trick them out of the fairgrounds. You want a fair, you you don't want to run a fair. You want good people who care about the fair to run a fair. You also want to protect the county. That's what this has been about from the beginning. But again, there's also bargaining reasons and legal advice, so if you want a closed session, you absolutely are entitled to it, but that's your decision. And we did notice it just in case we had to go into closed session.
Okay, I'm To that point, in case it's helpful, if it's still something that folks from the fair society are wondering, that rec center conversation without going into any details of it, is one hundred percent not going to affect the fair ever.
Never did, never was, never was even a concept.
Right, and and I'm talking about, I wasn't involved in in that stage of the rec center conversation, but I am now. And it has zero impact on the fair grounds, the fair society, anything. It's completely disconnected. There will never be anything that has anything to do with that. So in case they're wondering if that's something that we're looking to jockey a position into, it's absolutely not.
But don't you feel, I think from your conversation, I think you, my understanding or impression is that you you in fact feel that the rest of the committee are, and we're getting feedback, and I've always gotten feedback that the society itself really don't know what's going on. And it's a good opportunity in open session to uh to apprise them of what what's happening and how their uh committee is running the negotiations.
And I did inform Mr. O Sullivan that we would be having this conversation at this meeting today. That a majority of it would likely be in open session, so he's aware of it. If he wanted to
It's up to him. Well, Steve.
You know, the reason we need the MOU is things were happening down there. It shouldn't have happened, okay? The bathrooms all needed roofs. So why they do, they rip the ventilation system out and throw it away. Leave the wires hanging there. And rip over them. While the first fair they have, the floors are all wet, people are slipping and sliding all over, so the answer was, I will get a couple of fans and hang them there. You know, whether they're on a ground fault or not, now you got a pan hanging out here trying to dry the floor. So you know, the county had to go back in and redo that whole thing. And at the fair this year, I followed the cleaning people around and watched them mop their floors and they dried right up. Okay? So that's, you know, one of the reasons we you know, and what maintenance is the reason we changed the wording was so that maintenance, if it's code maintenance of any type, it needs to be done by somebody that's licensed. We don't care if it's their person, as long as he's licensed, insured and bonded. No, we don't care who does it as long as they are bonded, insured and everything, and it's a reasonable request.
It's also the renting of of uh county property.
Yeah.
Also, I mean, they rent all these buildings out. We don't know what's in there and they have another third party rent things out to to store and stuff. And uh they never gave us their financials and different things either. We've asked for their financials, we've asked for their purpose and intent.
They did give us
It's a fair, it should be, they do, they have the month of the fair. But they run all these other events and everything and we don't even know about them. I mean, there's like fifty events a year there. They have weddings, everything else. So they're renting people's land out and taking all the money and we still maintain it. So that's part of the headache too, I think.
They did, to be clear, give us the financials earlier, they sent it to several of us.
When?
Three months ago.
How can we never get them at our meeting? We ask for them at our meeting every time.
We had them, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, we didn't. I've never seen them.
Did it go to your county email, Kim, that you don't check? Probably.
Great, because it works so well. That's why I ask, that's why I have one.
Now, any any other organization that we have an MOU with that would treat us like the fair society has treated us, we would have discontinued the MOU. They just, I've been on this since two thousand and six and this fair has been, I mean, they they just make, they just demand. And when we ask for their financials, we don't get them. It's in the MOU that we're supposed to get them. We don't get the bylaws, we the, they only give us what they want to give us. And I mean, I've been at meetings where they've came in and told us what we had to do. And if we didn't, the blood would be on our hands. And it it's like, no, it won't. The the fair will be shut down if it is that truly that unsafe and requires that much money to make it safe, the electrical. I don't know, it's been a long time for me. And just the the pace we're on and all their demands that they want it back, they want the grandstand built. And I think they only need, what, four hundred and some thousand in operating capital to run it themselves without us. Yeah, I didn't know they were renting buildings all until we started in negotiations with them. I mean, I had no idea how much they had in their savings until very recently. And any of the meetings that we've been in trying to negotiate, it's not negotiations. I mean, their attorney just ad libs as we're sitting there, just off the cuff ad libs. And we will not get an MOU with them, absolutely well not. Not one that they're going to agree to. So I think the, we gave them our last best and final, like a a take it or leave it. Or we are getting a divorce and it is our land. And they rejected it. Well, now, I mean, you know, if we go back into negotiations with them and the only thing they would settle for is the forever MOU. I don't know, I something has to change.
How are we going to resolve it? Discontinue the MOU that we're working under and try to figure out how we're going to uh make sure the fair is uh every year. Start from scratch? Or do we give them the MOU as we've written it? And like Russ says, either or, and if they don't take the, if they take the or, I guess then we're stuck with it.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about, so we own the land, the county owns the land.
Yeah.
So if we get a divorce, do they buy the land from us?
No.
No. We own it. Belongs to the, every taxpayer in Paul County belongs to
Doug, what did you have?
I just want to throw this out to the board and it would be helpful to me is I can see where
I can see where the board is going, and I agree. So Malia should write up our contract. It says the MOU is going to be this, then we have number two, we have number three, we have number four. Bring it to us, and we can vote on it so that we're done.
We did that, we have that.
Do we have that?
Pretty much, between Steve and Malia.
Right, so we, this board delegated to the executive committee the authority to negotiate in good faith with ratification rights of the full county board, a new MOU. That's what's been happening over the last several years. We had a working draft, in fact, I think I shared this, their attorney sent us their, their ask, or their draft. Steve and I, and then the executive committee, I think on two or three different occasions, hashed out that, using that draft that Mr. O'Sullivan sent to us, with very minor changes except for that one year, December twenty twenty-four renewal date that would require a new agreement to be entered into. So that draft did exist. I do think, just from a procedural standpoint, the full county board delegated the authority to negotiate, but again, left the final decision up to the full county board. So the executive committee had a final best. That does not mean that the county board can't say, well, we're willing, and this is our, the county board's final best, to go to, give me a date certain, with still that renewal obligation for negotiation.
That was the only hangup, if I remember, the only basic hangup that we had with offering that draft, is put in the date, send it back to them, and say, this is it.
So if you, do you want a different date, is that what you're saying, like, look at?
There was no date in there, they wanted to go on forever.
Right, so that's.
We had a date.
And just to be clear, the, like, the minor changes you were talking about were things like defining what routine maintenance and things are.
Right.
Well, things like that, and then major changes were specifying a term.
Right.
They were satisfied. Well, what, go ahead, Brad.
So I'm gonna agree with everything Russ said. I mean, I've sat in on the last three executive committees that have where the fair has been the discussion. And it's over with. They're not gonna agree to anything other than perpetual one hundred percent of the time. Give it to us, stay out of our business. I mean, face it, if you, if the county had that agreement with somebody, why wouldn't they wanna stay in it? You know, I mean, I get all of the income, and I don't have very many expenses at the end of the day, because the county fixes all my buildings, they dump a bunch of money into the fair, and I get to keep it all. Every business owner, it's their dream to have somebody pay all their expenses and get to keep all the income. And once again, this year is a prime example of what the fair society does to us. On Saturday, I have a gentleman that I know jump out of the skid steer at the fair and say, look at what the idiots at the county done. They made this so all the water runs through the fair, through the chicken and the rabbit barn. But guess what, at the end of the day, it wasn't the idiots at the county who done it. It was, it was the people at the fair society who done it. So they screw it up, and we get the blame, and I think we're still leaving the elephant in the room of what was discussed about at the last executive committee meeting, and that is simply evicting them, and you know.
I'll agree with that also, with one exception. The board, society board, has been making all of the negotiations that I've ever dealt with. Maybe now, as an open session has proceeded, the rest of the board is sitting back and they're saying, wow, maybe we should go to our board, the rest of the society should come up and say, we should go to our board, look at the the county board session that they had, and the issues that came up, and that were, that we were not aware of. Now they are, they should be. And if that, if they could put pressure on the committee that's been stonewalling us, maybe this will go through. I think we should give it one more effort with a date. Go ahead.
Malia, you said that, right out that the things that their attorney told you, you picked out some things that were absolutely false.
The first attorney, correct, Max Newhouse.
Yeah, and I know from the people that I've talked to on their society, they have been led into things that are absolutely false.
And I, I don't believe that Max Newhouse deliberately put false statements in the letter.
No.
I believe he got that from somebody.
He got that from a couple individuals.
Not accusing an attorney of.
Their society, their society is not in agreement with what's happening.
That was my point.
This is not a society, I mean, I know a number of people in the society, they're great people, and this would never have happened if they were there, this is nothing.
Exactly.
This is nothing that, that two reasonable people could not sit down across the table from each other and figure out and make it work for both parties. But when one party, sitting on the other side of the room from the county, is unwilling to, unless we build them a million and a half dollar grandstand, we give them four hundred thousand dollars and give them the fairgrounds back, if that, that's their only goal, that is the end goal, and if that's it, there's no way the county can there's no way the county can be right at that point.
Maybe they're aware of it, will be aware of it by when the.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
The last meeting I went to, I handed out the final draft, MOU to every society member. Sat down next to a guy that had been sitting on the fair since I was there, and probably when
Ronnie.
John was there. I said, you ever seen one of these? No, never seen it. Hadn't seen it.
Well.
It tells me that, you know, not everybody, that's the first, probably the first time many of them people seen the MOU and understand what's in it.
Exactly.
So.
Maybe they'll understand if they listen to this podcast. Go ahead, Ryan.
And with that obligation to negotiate both sides after one year, the way that we presented that, it's, the expectation can be then is that you set that term at that point.
Absolutely, a lot of our other leases and MOUs have a renewal clause, renewal by agreement of both parties. I mean, if everything goes well, why wouldn't you just sign again, you know?
Because it seems like we're at a point where things are contentious, whatever million words that you wanna use, things need to be figured out over this next year or more. But then you can just take it step by step and keep incrementally getting to where you want it to be.
In the, in the email from Mr. O'Sullivan, where he informed us of the rejection of the offer, I truly think not only the society, or at least the executive committee of the fair board, but certainly, for whatever reason, Mr. O'Sullivan believes it was some type of trick where the county was gonna say, hey, at the end of twenty twenty-four, we're not renewing. I truly believe that they believe that, that they believe it was just, oh, we'll deal with them for a year. And so making it clear that there is absolutely no intention to say, haha, we got you now, that this really is a good faith effort. We may be watching this, we'll do that. If, I certainly, I think we get this uploaded a lot faster than we used to as far as the videos, so it can be shared.
Malia, one of the things that came up in the conversations, now, were there any other changes other than what you and I talked about? In other words, when you and Joel reviewed this thing, did you make any changes other than what you and I did?
We brought it to the committee at the executive committee. I don't recall if the executive committee made any substantial changes, but I can email to the full board a blind copy, so everybody has a redline version, so you can see the version that Mr. O'Sullivan sent to us, and then the changes that we made when we sent back that was rejected. That'd be helpful if everybody received that in a line.
The comment that was made was, there was some one or two word thing in there that was something about the money they make and the county's right to it. I don't recall reading it, but that's the other two words, so it's the whole five words that we're here for, that was stipulation on their part. I suppose it'd be in the financial somewhere.
I don't think there's five words that's holding this up. It's the fact that, that they've set their goals where they want them. And anything, and anything less than that is a loss in their eyes, even though I don't believe it is, I don't know why they would look at it that way. There's been, for the most part, up until the last few years, I have to think, a pretty good relationship. I mean, the county doesn't.
Used to be excellent. When I was on the board, it was.
Been good for years.
But I just, I don't think there's anything at the end of the day that we can do to make, not the society, the fair board happy, and I mean, I think, I think when their letter comes back and says the county seems to think that they own the fairgrounds, that says a lot, because we do.
We do.
That's like telling your landlord that, sorry, you paid the, you know, you pay the expenses on the house, but it's mine, because I've been here for X amount of years. It's not.
I know, I understand the frustrations, Russ. Mine too, Johnny, we've lived with this stuff, but for years. The the fact is that we're the ones that have been lamenting and agonizing over the whole situation. I think if we, I personally believe that if they absolutely take a good look, I think that society has more to say about this agreement than they've ever been notified that they, that they have any input whatsoever. And I think we ought to give them one opportunity to, to rectify that misunderstanding.
So are you saying, Jay, send it back to them as it was sent to them before, and say, asking them to reconsider it?
Definitely put in a date.
Right, but I mean, we leave it exactly as it is.
Well, it was, it was understandable. Malia and Steve went over that in great details, and at the executive committees, all that I've heard was that this is what's acceptable, until we get the final date, which was not acceptable, because it didn't have an ending. That was the only real issue that we had, the rest were minor, and no problem. Vince, do you have input?
No, I think when you say date, has, you know, we said one year in it, so the question is, do you send it back with the one year again, now that they had a chance, or do you put in a different year?
But the one year, it doesn't end, that's a review date.
Right.
It's not an ending of the contract, it's a review, like we.
Is that a fact?
I've got like fifty of these.
It uses the word.
It's a review date.
It uses the word expires, but with an obligation to enter into good faith negotiations prior to the expiration. Certainly take out that word expire and use, the term length goes until December thirty first with an obligation to.
That we should do.
It means the same thing, but I, maybe that word expire.
That would help, that would help.
It would help a lot. Oh, go ahead.
Okay, um, I have a question for the lawyer heads in this, in this room here. So if you have, if you have a, in perpetuity, and you have, laws don't change very fast, okay? I don't know what NFPA is running right now, I think when I was working, it was twenty fourteen. OSHA doesn't change very fast, but they do. So how could you have a state, a statement or contract? A MOU. How can you have an MOU open-ended, when you have, when you have laws and rules and regulations that can change in that timeframe, and you have no way of addressing that? Because I mean, life safety has got to come first. It has to.
It was done in error years ago.
Everything needs, everything needs a sunset date.
Yes, thank you, that's the word.
That's what we're trying to establish.
And it can't be just a review, like all of other MOUs, we have, how many you got, a couple hundred, whatever? They're just reviewed every year. Doesn't mean it ends unless something happens, it's a review date. So we have a policy that we review those every year, do we not?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have a policy, so it just fits under our regular policy. So it isn't, we're not changing anything. Not saying it ends, unless something drastically happens with any of the MOUs. So it's, it's not, when everybody thinks it's an end date, it's not an end date.
Well, we're gonna take the legal advice on whether this ends or doesn't end. If we put a date in there, I would hope that that it means something, otherwise might as well leave it at it.
I just can't imagine that it's legal to leave it open-ended like that.
Can I ask Malia?
Yeah, ask her, well.
Malia, the way our discussion is a whole here, where it says negotiations with the fair society, are, would we be allowed to take a vote on, if Russ or, or made a motion on a one-year, like?
Yeah, but not here.
Like Steve said, do keep everything the way it is in a one-year, could we make a motion and take a vote? So that society would know.
Not in committee of the whole, but when we're out of the committee of the whole, there's agenda.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
Yeah, we'll get here. That action for the matters that we discussed.
Yeah.
Does any more discussion, or anyone had any great mo, you have a question?
No, I just, just a comment, if the board elects to go, give them one more try in another month on that, just be aware that they're gonna be advertising shortly for winter storage and building our buildings with boats and RVs, so that's part of your decision process, that just be aware that that is probably gonna be in the process, because they usually start.
Well, I certainly hope that'll stimulate them to get off their butt, get something done.
And just so we remember, we're talking about including, changing that language on how the term length is presented.
Yeah, and we don't need to vote on that, I can certainly make that change, because again, it doesn't change the meaning.
Right.
Saying the term is X to Y, not that it expires at Y.
It's kind of a gesture of how we're saying, like, we're not bailing.
Right.
Well, anytime a layman tries to make a legal document, it turns out, there's a lot of them flowing wrong.
Can I ask you a quick question, Malia? Can, can you write, can you structure the sentence in a way that basically shows the intent that the next administrator will be, you know, on this date in twenty twenty-four, with the intent to renew, this will be reviewed? Something really like that, as opposed to the way we have it now.
Sure, no, I'll read to you sort of the way it reads right now. This agreement will take effect on today's date and shall expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This agreement shall be revisited prior to expiration, and both parties shall engage in good faith efforts to extend this agreement or enter into a successor agreement. But I can make it stronger.
I don't know, I mean, can we put our intent in there, that the county's not bailing, we really like the fair, we wanna support the fair, we need the people that are volunteering hundreds of hours to run the fair, you know, whatever.
I mean, I I will change the word expire, oh wait, this is my PDF version, I'll change the word expire. The term shall be, begin on today's date and run through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And then this, with all the other flowery, which is the intention.
Renewals.
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we ready to make a decision on this?
One more comment, if we just have the flowery renewal, why would I come in good faith to negotiate? Because, oh, the administrator, the next administrator is just gonna sign off on it, because there was this, you know, nice, nice wording on it. I mean, at the end of the day, the two parties need to get to the table and negotiate what is good for both parties, or it's going to end up being very bad for both parties.
Right, I think the flowery language is saying both parties will engage in negotiations with good faith. That doesn't mean, you know.
As long as that's flowery, I'm fine with it.
I think, you know, the other thing is, the all county MOUs by policy are reviewed annually. Hearing that now that we got a policy that we review every MOU annually, do we or don't we?
All policies, all MOUs like this, meaning an agreement with an outside organization, an MOU could be every little contract we sign. And if the contract is for a longer term, we may not do it every year. If, I don't know if we have any for longer term, but any we may not do it every year. If, I don't know if we have any for longer term, but any lease that we have. Most of them are simply a phone call. Everything okay? We'll send you another copy. Sign it and that's it.
Okay. With the trade school over here, that's what you do?
Yeah.
And that's a pretty big.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, it'd be nice if they understood that all of these larger M O Us are reviewed annually.
So.
Just theirs.
M O Us that are not reviewed annually. M O U with the D N R regarding the Stauer Trail. So there's an M O U that's not reviewed annually. Uh, but it has exit clauses. Either party can opt out with a sixty day notice. So a term is not important if you can opt out with a little reasonable notice. But a term that doesn't have an opt out really ought to have a beginning and an end, not an end to the relationship, but this particular embodiment of the agreement.
Where did sunset?
So if we, if we can't get an M O U with them, even changing the language, is this board prepared to do what? Nothing? As we have been doing for years? Or are we actually going to do something?
Apparently we'll have to do something. A totally different approach.
Well, I'm just saying, Malia's gonna send whatever it is we're gonna send and we're gonna be sitting right back here in the same spot.
Tail can't wag the dog.
So we'll send it. We'll ask them to view it.
So I mean, are, are we prepared to give them again our last best and final?
I think what.
With maybe a clause in there, what's going to happen if it's not accepted?
I think what the chairman has indicated, and I think it's plausible that the other members of the fair society that have not been in on the background, because really all of the public narrative has come from the fair society. We've had closed sessions. We have the ability to do that. And they've been able to frame it whatever way they would want to. If we can get those really amazing folks that are members of the fair society that are a part of that because they care about the longevity of the fair and they can watch this communication and they can read what we send them. I mean, if that actually gets out, there could be a lot of pressure on that executive.
They'll keep it.
Of the fair board to accept something.
But I think Russ's question is a good one. When we come out of committee as a whole, can we say we propose this action with the understanding that if it does not occur, our next step is blank.
Yeah.
Well, but I don't know. Have we, I have, has there been deliberate thought to what that consequence is? I mean, I, I haven't, and I don't, my poor brain can't come to grips with what those are. But, uh, I mean, it, it is a bit of brinksmanship. But, uh, you're right. The tail can't wag the dog. You, you, this is an unsustainable relationship. And so there has to be a consequence. If, if this gets rejected again, what, what are we going to do? I, but I don't know that we've deliberated over that.
Isn't that the conversation to be had though, at that time?
At what time?
If and when it gets rejected again?
But that's our decision. So we're, we're gonna just give it another month till we get back together again? We're talking about sending this change real sudden. Motion is made when we go into, back into session. But are we going to include something with it that if it's not, if an M O U is not accepted, we can't get an M O U with them? Um, we're moving on.
Russ, Russ makes the motion.
Isn't that part of a motion, Russ?
It can be.
I move, we go back into open session.
Motion is made to go back into open session. Seconded by Steve. Into discussion on that. All in favor.
Aye.
We're back in open session. Now, anybody want, as a result of the conversation, that discussion that we've had in the committee as a whole, does anybody have a motion they'd like to make in reference to any action that they'd like us to take in reference to the, uh, problem or the remedy or the scenario? You make the motion, call it what you want.
I'd make a motion that Malia changed the wording in the last M O U that we sent. And take the word, was it expire?
Yes.
Take the word expire. Oh, we're not looking for anything to expire. And this will be the county's last best and final offer to get an M O U. If we cannot come to an agreement, we would recommend eviction of the society.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Brad. Any more discussion on that? Or does anybody want it read back?
Hallelujah. We got some teeth in it.
That's some, it's pretty plain in my mind. Any more discussion? Full call.
All right. John Bonner Prize.
Yes.
Brad Olson.
Yes.
Doug Rowdy.
Yes.
Steve Wornall.
Yes.
Ryan Wood.
Yes.
Trey, he's not here. Dan Ruck.
Yes.
Barbara McAfee.
Yes.
Jeremy Hall.
Yes.
Kim O'Connell.
Yes.
Amy Middleton.
Yes.
Denise Lalié Prey.
Yes.
Russ Arcand.
Yes.
C J Simmons.
Yes.
Unanimous. Okay. Moving on.
We have a short break before the presentation of the.
We have a, uh, short break. Participate. So that's not. All right. Presentation by the auditor. Report.
Danny, Chairman, I hate to disappoint you.
All right, I've been disappointed last.
There we go.
Except, uh, January was a cold month. Because it was a cold month, a lot happened. There's a lot happened in January. Someone isn't here today and that's our auditor Jonathan Sherwood because he's having a baby.
January, February, March.
I hope I didn't math.
That was a.
We got.
That was a long way around.
That was very.
So if you'll allow me, I will briefly, uh, try to recap some of the highlights of the audit uh, that Jonathan presented very capably at the general government committee earlier this month. And Claire, uh, can provide you with a link to his presentation on the audit if that would be useful for you. Very briefly, uh, Jonathan would like me to say importantly that in the determination of CLA, the auditor financial statements for twenty twenty two were barely stated and pretty of material misstatements. So auditor speak for, you shouldn't be able to believe what you see in this audit. And hopefully everyone found one in their mailbox. Uh, he would also want me to mention a couple of, uh, changes. One is that there's a important change in how, uh, counties and other municipalities, governments, uh, deal with leases. They used to be considered essentially operating expense, but we now have to look at them more or less is, uh, because of the long-term commitment and leases capital. So the way we handle our accounting will be a little bit different because of that accounting standards change. Um, he would also like me to report on, uh, what are called internal control issues. If you've been on the board for a few years, you'll recognize that we always have these. We're a relatively small unit of government. And, and so, uh, there are audit adjustments that need to be made to bring the work that we do in accordance with the way the auditors and Gatsby want audited financial statements to look. The good news is uh, in twenty one, there were twenty eight of these audit adjustments and in twenty two, there were nineteen. So a little bit progress. We'll probably never get to zero. We may be up in some years and down in others, but that sounds pretty good. He would also want me to mention that because of our scale, we have what is called limited segregation of duties. So we have some people that are looking at one aspect of, of the books and also entering in a way that in a perfect world, we would separate those out. There would be segments. So we can't always do that in a small department. He would want us to be attentive to that and we are. I'm almost at the bottom line. Uh, and then I think this was pretty deep in his presentation. I'm going a lot faster than he did. But if you had your audit report and you turn to page thirteen, you would notice mine's conveniently highlighted. Then it reports that the unassigned general fund balance coming out of twenty two was thirty one million, seven hundred thousand dollars in change. So when the administrator provides his condition of the county report, his budget update, you'll hear that number of about thirty two million dollars again. Jonathan would probably also want you to look on page twenty five of your report. And most of the way, the way down in that, uh, second to the leftmost column, you'll see net change in fund balance. And that's either a sur- a surplus or a deficit. And for twenty twenty two, the county posted a surplus of five point five million dollars. Now, for various reasons.
Can I ask you a quick in the middle there? What's considered a surplus? Are all our bills paid? So this is a surplus?
Uh, as of December thirty first, twenty twenty two, everything that was bookable in that year, this is the net thirty one. We still have bills that we pay that were obligations created before my time and will be exhausted after my.
So it's not really a surplus?
Uh, the auditor calls it a surplus.
Yeah. Better than a deficit.
Better than a deficit. Right. And I would, I would just, uh, say that the, the administrator will cover a fraction of the general fund that is available for projects of the county. He'll cover that in his presentation. But the surplus was five point five billion in twenty two. Any questions? Or any questions for Jonathan?
She's in the self funded insurance that long as we're in here.
Gosh. Let's say it was six point nine.
Page fifteen, I think, isn't it? I always got so much of them. That was a six one. And they, they think we need two, seven to be safe. Is that what it was? What I heard is presentation.
This was going so well.
Thanks, Jim.
You're talking about that health account.
Yeah, I will.
Six point one nine.
They want us to keep it around what? Two, seven or something?
I even have a update on that because I have a current balance. So if it's on page thirteen.
Fifteen.
Fifteen. That's a sub top.
It's under highway department.
Yep. Six point proprietary funds, six point one. And we are one point two less than that as of right now.
Question I have is of that five million dollars, uh, excess that we had, um, is there any funds that were one-time funds from the government that we received in twenty twenty two?
We received a substantial amount of ARPA funds. I think the second tranche was in twenty twenty two. And so the administrator reported on this as well. Those aren't funds that we can expect to see again.
Right.
Uh, as a.
Over taxation of five million dollars for county. It was funds received outside.
Uh, the, we, we had that second tranche of the ARPA funds. Um, one of the, there's a lot of moving parts with the budget. You know, one is, uh, situation with employment in the county up until recently. The administrator will, uh, discuss the largest expense categories and one of those personnel not fully staffed, we won't spend all your money. That's one of the things that contributes to the budget, but a, a big chunk of the revenue was certainly the second tranche of the ARPA. So balance of the eight point two.
And no, we don't tax the people or we have a flat levy. So we can't just jack up taxes.
Or spending what we need to.
Can you look on page, uh, nine? Total net position increased by ten point four million during the fiscal year. What does this mean?
Yeah. So net position is a balance sheet. Let's find the balance sheet. That would be all of the assets of the county, including its enterprise and all related activities over the period. But more than just the general fund, before we were talking about the general fund, this is the entire asset base.
What is that?
So it'd be everything from the buildings that we own, uh, to our side business. Total position. So when we make investments in infrastructure like we did in this building, now that's about, that would change the balance sheet as well. So that's, that's, you know, that can't be considered to be a spendable item. And the administrator will, you know, discuss that in the next presentation.
Page twenty. Net position. On the bottom, the fourth lineup, economic and housing loan progress. We have eight hundred thousand. We're talking about putting two hundred thousand into one of these. So we already have an eight hundred thousand into it.
So, uh, that and, you know, Bob and others aren't here to comment on that.
Okay.
Those are, uh, those monies related to, you know, and, uh, community development block grant. Investments of that type. So they're, they're disconnected from the resolution that you passed authorizing the administrator to develop.
To develop something. This, this isn't included in that, even though it's kind of called that.
Well, it, if my memory is correct on this being C D B G money, then overall, it's devoted to improving housing, but it's, it's disconnected from from what you all passed supplementally.
Total disconnect.
So it's a different whole program, but it is a housing program. It's one of them.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's, I'm just wondering why it's a housing program that we're adding to it. So well, it's different. But it's not ours. This is not ours?
No, it's a, it's state program, isn't it?
Well, I, what we need to dig deeper on this, my understanding is federal community development block grant dollars that first administered through WEDA. And then someone.
Central maybe.
Works with those resources.
West half, you know, there's affordable housing in the county.
Couple of them, but it just, yeah.
Subsidized.
Subsidized a part of a, yeah.
All right.
From the community.
So it is like we're not doing it. We are doing it.
Look, you want to continue your presentation?
I'm here to answer questions and forward questions that I can't answer on to those who, uh, know the answer. So if there's other questions, I'll
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Out of respect for one of our presenters who need to get going soon, I'm wondering if we could move Melissa's presentation up next. Uh, on. Statistical platform, CJCC.
Ah, yeah. Wait a minute. What number is that? Oh.
Three, nine, just D.
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 Oh, well, let's take D next before the condition or the county condition report. That what you're asking?
Yeah, the, the, yes.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Let's move D up in front of B.
Oh, I.
It's in January, so.
It's in January, so. So this will be a little bit of an overview for some of you, a little refresher. And then for some of you that are new, this might be new information, but I am the CJCC coordinator. So it's the Polk County Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. So in two thousand and eight, there wasn't really a fully operating CJCC, but Polk County started a treatment court that began with three participants. In two thousand and nine, the CJCC was formed as a five oh one C three nonprofit. And then in two thousand and nineteen, the CJCC transitioned to be under Polk because some of the grant funding, like we rely heavily on the treatment and diversion funding from the state. So you had to be a county or tribal entity to receive that. And then in two thousand and twenty-one, the Intoxicated Driver Intervention Program moved from behavioral health to the CJCC. We now have four programs, the First Time Offender Program, which is for individuals that have very low-level felonies or typically like low-level misdemeanors that have never been and that's to discourage them from continuing on with potentially receiving a criminal record. The Intoxicated Driver Intervention Program is for people with OWI seconds and thirds. Substance diversion, that's a lot of felony, meth possession. Occasionally we see like heroin or fentanyl, but it's typically meth in our area. And then our treatment court, which is for the high-risk, high-needs individuals. Many of them have been to prison or are on their way to prison, and this is kind of their last chance. So the mission statement for the CJCC is to reduce crime and recidivism in Polk County and to increase offender accountability and positive change. And with that, that goes along with two of the county board's top priorities. And also we are like a collaboration. So we have a lot of various stakeholders in the CJCC. So the judges, the district attorney's office, public defender's office, sheriff's department, a lot of community agencies and nonprofits and community members are part of the CJCC. So this is just an example of our dashboard. Claire, if you wouldn't mind just bringing up the website. So this is on the Polk County website. And if you wouldn't mind just scrolling down to the data, that would be great. And so on this, I won't go a whole lot into this tonight, but you are able to look up some of our information. So click on charges by substance. So you can click the month, the year for which we have data. You can see some of our charges. We do have to work on getting better data through the state. So we don't have a lot of information on some of the substance charges. And then if you could just click on diversion programming. So I think it's right in the middle. And so then you can also see each month. So September won't show until probably the end of the month or like early October. Sometimes some of the data will show, but you can always see how many people we have in our programs. If we have had any graduates, if anyone has been terminated. And then for pre-trial screens, we do those on new arrests that are not just booked and released, are being held over for court. And so then you can see, Claire, if you wouldn't mind just clicking on pre-trial screenings, then you can see each month how many people we've done pre-trial screens on. So so far for the year, there's two hundred eighty-five people that we've done full criminal histories. And then the judges, the DA's office, defender's office, get risk reports that they can read going into court to know how likely someone is to appear in court. If they're released, how likely they are to commit a violent crime, et cetera. And then you can just go to the next slide. So this breaks down some of our costs of treatment court. This is our most intense program. So it's the most costly for participants. So prison and jail in Wisconsin per year is about at least thirty thousand dollars per person. Jail might be a little bit different if they get the Cooper work release and they're paying some fees for that. So for your analysis test, it's nine dollars a test. Our participants test three times a week in the early stages. Eventually that goes down to twice a week. And so that's a little over fourteen hundred dollars per year for participant. If you're looking at the case managers' wages and benefits with about twenty participants a year, per time is about three thousand five hundred dollars per participant per year. Our prizes and incentives varies. Right now, they've been, our treatment court has been doing phenomenal and they've been getting group rewards. So we're spending a little bit more on incentives because they get a group reward when everyone does what they're supposed to that we need. So it equals to about a little over five thousand dollars a year per participant. And again, most of this is covered by our TAD grant. And then also with that, it's hard to estimate the true cost of that because our participants in a lot of our programs, but especially treatment court, are doing community service hours that's benefiting nonprofits in the area. They're rebuilding their family. Many of them have had CPS cases and they're getting custody back of their children. And then they're also gaining stable employment. So they're paying taxes in the county. They, through their employment, have funds to make purchases throughout the county. So it's really providing more for the county rather than them just sitting in a facility where it's just taxpayer dollars paying all of it. And you can go to the next slide. And so this is some county comparisons for tax levy dollars that are going to CJCC's population of the county and what that cost breaks down to per resident. So in Sawyer County, there was two hundred seventy thousand dollars in tax levy for their CJCC in two thousand and twenty-two. They have a population of a little over eighteen thousand and it breaks down to about fourteen dollars and seventy-nine cents per resident per year to fund their CJCC. Washburn County receives a hundred and forty-six thousand in tax levy. And they have a population of close to seventeen thousand, breaks down to about eight dollars and seventy-four cents a year for their CJCC. St. Croix County is seven hundred and sixty-four thousand in tax levy. And they have a population of ninety-five thousand and it breaks down to about eight dollars and four cents per resident per year. In Dunn County, it's four hundred and thirty-four thousand in tax levy. And that was actually for two thousand and twenty-three instead of two thousand and twenty-two. They have a population of forty-five thousand, five hundred forty-seven people. So the closest in population to Polk. And that breaks down to about nine dollars and fifty-four cents a year per resident for their CJCC. And Polk, we get a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars in tax levy for our CJCC in two thousand and twenty-three. Their population of forty-five thousand, four hundred thirty-one. It breaks down to two dollars and sixty-nine cents per resident per year. And then you can go to the next slide. So one of the benefits with our programs and having a CJCC, our participants are reducing the destructive cycle of substance abuse and mental health disorders. Any of our programs, other than maybe first time offender, they have to have mental health and substance abuse evaluations. And then especially with substance abuse, they have to attend whatever those providers are saying their assessment needs are. So for some people, it's intensive outpatient. Some people, it's outpatient. Some people may not have any recommendations, which is rare. It's enhancing the productivity of participants because again, they have to participate in community service. They have to participate in either employment or full-time education. It is reducing recidivism. And the jail was averaging about eighty inmates a day. I think it's a little bit higher lately. And then our diversion programs across the board are averaging about twenty participants per day. So if we break down the cost of what's spent on the CJCC and we break it down per participant across all four programs, it would be about two thousand, one hundred dollars a year for each participant. But again, like first time offender is pretty hands-off. So it's really not costing much versus treatment court, which requires a lot more resources in case management. And so that's again, taking more funds. And you can go to the next slide. And so there's a link to our website. Others, I broke it down. We're under government, general government division. And then CJCC for anyone that wants to be seeing the kind of regular basis, what that data says. So.
Questions? Yeah. Thank you. So on slide number six, it was noticing that the, that there seems to be a disparity between one of the other counties are, are spending compared to what we're spending. And I want to know how, what, what drives that amount and who sets that two dollars and
sixty. So I am guessing it's administration, the county board that sets the amount of what the CJCC gets per year. We're always welcome to more funding and we can always do more.
Yeah, I get that, but I mean.
So I
Didn't you resort to grant funding?
And for our grant funding, we receive, it was typically a hundred and fifty thousand a year. And in two thousand and twenty-three and now going into two thousand and twenty-four, we'll receive a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in grant funding. And these other counties do receive grant funding as well.
We're going to tax levy. In addition, you add in seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a grant we received. So I, I don't, I, I think what's the purpose of that slide is to say we're very efficient with what we do. We're using this money and trying to maximize it. That's how I interpreted it.
And I think, you know, just looking at Sawyer County, they're dumping a lot of money into their CJCC and they're a very tiny county, but they're seeing it in overdose like daily. So they're in a different place and we want to not be in that place. But they're, they're, they're fighting a
They're, they're probably also using opioid funds.
Yeah. So all these other counties do receive grant funds also, but I just have the data on what the tax, yeah, the county tax levy is. And some counties didn't respond with what their amounts were. So the data that you see is counties around us where they are willing to share some of that information.
We like what you're doing.
Awesome. Yeah. And we always appreciate the support of the county board and we should be having a couple of treatment court graduations in January. So keep you guys posted on that too.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Condition of the county report. I would assume Vince is gonna.
Yes. In my job description, it is required that I present to you a the county. And so tonight I'm going to share with you not only the condition of the county report, but also i- in, in really an advanced form, a general overview of the budget. So that'll be the next item on your agenda that'll, that'll kind of blend these two in here. So if you are on the state of the county report, Claire, go to the next slide. In terms of this county, I think one of the things that you all should be very proud of is your ability to focus on key priorities. And by identifying those game changers or those things that you think are priority, a few things have happened. It helps staff and our resource to understand where they need to be applied. But it also helps you all focus on the important things. And I know one of the most important things in this position is to focus on the important things. Weed out the, the noise and all the things that are less important and focus on these big things if you can. And these are the priorities that you have set for this three-year time period. We've talked about those. The next slide, let me give you just an update on some of these things. Recent actions, we've upgraded nine-one-one for public safety, upgraded the nine-one-one communication equipment and coverage. We've added a drug investigation officer, a recreational officer. We've added a body scanner in the jail and on deck, things that we will hope to be doing here soon. We're going to be upgrading the communication consoles, tasers and radios. So some of that equipment that's needed and help on our nine-one-one people function more efficiently. An additional communications officer, upgraded security presence in this building. And we've improved the security over in, or will be improving the security over in the justice center. And then this year also an outside agency, the Community Referral Agency, which provides shelter for battered women. You know, we're, so we're contributing or recommending a contribution to them. Next slide. In substance abuse, you just heard a nice presentation from Melissa. We are in year three of five in our Drug Free Communities Grant. We, that we won a five-year, seven hundred and fifty thousand TAD grant for diversion programs. Programs average twenty-two participants a month. Our jail population is around eighty per month. We are supporting our pro-sober programming, things like Onyx House, Partners for Recovery. We support recovery. These are halfway homes. They're homes that help people get back into the community. On deck, Narcan direct training, alcohol compliance checks. That's where, you know, we'll send children, teenagers or something into a bar. It's just a way to reinforce to our commercial providers of alcohol that they have a responsibility to, to check IDs. Also within the jail and, and with the community service division, providing a social worker to work with some of those folks to get, help them re-entry back into their communities. We think by providing some type of counseling and advice and support, it will help the outcome. The next slide is just one bit of data. And you talk about drug arrests. And look, there's a lot more than just monitoring arrests to see how we're doing on the battle with drug abuse. But when, you know, meth was such the, the news, you know, it's good to see this data and you see that line coming down in terms of the drug arrests from two thousand and eighteen to twenty-two. Obviously there's more data that we investigate and will look at, but it certainly is a good sign. You know, you don't want that line going up forever, right? So that's, that's a very good sign. The next slide, you've heard about broadband a lot. We've made significant investment. And we've seen significant investment by our local internet service providers in laying fiber. And I can tell you, we're way ahead of most other rural counties, if not every other rural county. And that's largely due to our internet service providers and the competitive nature that they are out there to do it. But it also took this board to re, to reduce some of the restrictions, some of the, the fees and so on, to encourage them and to support them. We've also created a local grant to expand coverage in Polk County. This board has. And we're working with people who are invested in improving broadband in their business or in their schools or in their, you know, customer base. And we're calling them broadband champions and asking them to give us information. On deck, right now, we know it's going to be more money, a little over a billion dollars in federal money coming to Wisconsin. We're kind of looking to see how the governor and the state is going to roll that out. There's been some talk about, obviously they want more fiber to fill those gaps that are out there. But there's even been talk by the governor about recognizing the cost of running it from the road to the house. So we're going to be keeping our eye on that and certainly will be playing in that game. This is a map and it's really an advanced map, I'm telling you, because other counties don't have this, but we monitored, we got our internet service providers to say, you've heard this number before, approximately eighty-five percent of our county is covered. That doesn't mean eighty-five percent of our residents have the cable right outside their door. But it's in that general area where we think we can eventually expand and dip into. So good progress there. But it's in that general area where we think we can eventually expand and dip into. Uh, so good progress there. Parked Recreation and Tourism is another one we had actually six years or four years ago when we started this. And we've all seen that change. You've all talked to residents or visitors who talk about the park systems are better. The trails are improving, there are more of them. Uh, we're doing water quality studies. Uh, and you know, investing in things that are important here in this county. We've got in, on deck, the DD Kennedy upgrades, we've got the intensive AT park, ATV park up in Sterling. Uh, which I think is going to be a big draw to this county. It's gonna be very unique. Uh, Clam Falls Dam, we've invested in that and, and we're gonna see that recreational uh, area remain to be a, a, a draw and just a beautiful place in the county. And also the, the trailhead down in St. Cory Falls is really kind of a, gonna be a pretty special uh, uh, trailhead because we got the bathrooms, people are gonna recognize that when they come into our county as a place they can congregate, start their their paths towards our trails and parks. Housing is another of the priorities. It's a new priority. We've already created a uh, program to in, provide loans to communities, a kind of a partnership with them. Uh, we are working currently to uh, uh, create the criteria for who's, who can get these funds, what community. So we're putting together and we'll have probably next month at this meeting a uh, kind of an application process, which directs uh, communities to work with uh, developers who are developing the types of housing that we need and how they can be eligible for those funds. So more will be coming on that. And then infrastructure, obviously very critical. Uh, it's a new priority again in our six priorities. Uh, we have roads uh, that are, we're heavily invested in, County B and others. I know Mo always goes over with me on a monthly or more so basis of the different projects that, that are needed and that we're going to do, you know. Well, JJ, CCF, I can't remember all the letters, Mo's got them all down. But we also have buildings that continue to need upgrading. If you recall, it used to be when the roof started leaking, we repaired it. Now we know, you know, as things start uh, getting older, we know we're planning in advance when they have to be done. Uh, the CISA and Northwood Buildings, you know, they need some new, I think it's heating and air conditioning, I think their roof may need done. The recycling center, we're making a heavy investment in that recycling center. I think we've approved spending of up to like over three point one million dollars to enhance that. Uh, we hope much of that will be paid for with grants, but we're moving ahead with that and, and that's gonna have an impact. So the key here is this board has come to an agreement on some priorities. We do more than this. But by agreeing to that, I think it set us, you know, ahead in many respects because we have staff. We work with the committees and we're moving forward on um, these projects. The purpose of the projects again, remember is, is we thought, we don't want to just sit here and go meeting to meeting to meeting. We wanna do, spend our time here, spend our energies and our funds so that we can look back and say we made a difference in this county. And these are the kind of projects that are doing that. Now, Don had great news. You know, we talked about the um, surplus that the auditors reported for us and, and that's always good, right? And you can see a history of our general fund, uh, starting in two thousand nineteen at about thirteen point six million. Mr. Bonner Prize, what was it about in two thousand eight or two thousand ten?
Less than ten.
Yes, it was way down there. And so through people prior to me, through boards, prior to many of you uh, and, and some of you here, uh, we've begun to build that surplus up, which is important. Because there's always gonna be that time when the economy turns around or an emergency comes up or we need those funds. The message you're gonna continue to receive from me is we're, we're in really good shape financially, I feel good about it. But we have to be disciplined. We can spend money, but if we spend it, it should be on things that we plan for, that we anticipate. And we realize it's probably more important than some other things. We don't spend money just because it's here. When you do that, that's how we get in the problems we had back in two thousand eight, two thousand ten. Thing I want you to see though, with the news from the auditor. In two thousand twenty-two, with the additional surplus, uh, that will give us a total of about thirty-two million dollars in our general fund. Reserve by resolution is about half of that, so approximately sixteen million dollars is in there. That's that rainy day fund or that emergency fund. Doesn't mean we can't get to it, but it would take a two-thirds. I think it's two-thirds, right? Not seventy-five percent, two-thirds vote to say this is important, let's do it. In addition, so that's that bottom half. The eight million above that in gray is funds that are previously committed. So that might include uh, Clam Falls Dam, uh, the recycling center, uh, other well, maybe the justice center roof, that may be included in there as well. So that's previously committed. So what is remaining available, uh, by, by policy is about eight million dollars, that if we had to dip into that, we could. If you recall last year about November, in the budget uh, discussions, we had some items where provisionally, I said, no, you know, there are things we can put off or I'm, we're focusing over here. But we decided to do the roof, we decided to do something. I think that's when we added the, another expansion on the recycling center. So we added about three or four million dollars and that came out of the general fund. And next slide, just an overall summary of, of really the state of the county is our financial position is strong. You know, you saw that, I think we're, we're doing well, we're, we're continuing to get a little growth in the, in the general fund. We're making progress on the priorities that this board has set. We're beating the challenge of inflation and tight revenues. So we all know what inflation is doing. We also know that uh, we're not gonna be getting the state and the federal funds like we have in the past. But I think thanks to the, the leadership team here, thanks to you all, we're gonna come to you with a budget that balances. And that's great news. The other thing that we hear about a lot is the workforce remains stable despite the competitive pressures. And we always hear people say, gosh, I'm hearing other people here and we lose people. That happens all the time, right? But I do think relatively stable, uh, we, we are keeping it that way because we do offer an, a, a good benefit package. We've improved it of late, the last couple of years. Our wages are competitive, we're doing a wage study. And we're starting to get that information in and that we've, we have some gaps that we have to change, it's gonna cost us a little more money. But in general, I think we've got a, a pretty good, uh, you know, we compare well with our surrounding county. And then finally, you know, I credit the, the directors and the managers that we have in this organization because they're the ones that are face-to-face with the employees and employees work for them and they, they respect them. We develop them and they, they appreciate that. If they like working here, if they respect their, their bosses, they stay. So while yes, we've got turnover, it's more than we'd like, everybody has turnover. And I think overall, I think you've seen a generally relative stable workforce throughout the organization. So that's my status report on the county. A, a brief overview, if you have questions on that, before I get into a, a general budget update, feel free to fire away.
Is there, on that slide where you had the uh, thirty-two million in the general fund? And the two parts where it was eight million reserve and eight million available. You'd mentioned Clam Falls Dam and the recycling center is like examples of uh, committed money. Were, we had taught, you had mentioned that we're hoping that the recycling center might be covered in, in large by grants. And then I thought a while back, we'd had a conversation about how the Clam Falls Dam is also possibly fully funded by. I, I, I didn't think that was gonna be a general fund.
We, we, uh, no, and, and in fact, you know, we have two million dollars for the Clam Falls Dam coming from the state. We are applying for some grants that we think will pay for eight hundred thousand dollars or so uh, of it. Uh, but we don't know if we'll get that for sure. We, we're confident, but we don't know for sure. So we have to account for those funds. Uh, so yeah, if, if we got all these grants and more, then
Picture of
Could, could be more, yes.
Yeah.
But it's, it's very difficult to
Yeah, yeah, you have to plan for the other side.
Vince? Yeah, are there, just broad brush or generally speaking, are there things on the horizon that, you know, two, three, four, five-year horizon that you're seeing that you know, responsible board or something should be concerned with now or things that you see that may, may turn this, this financial picture in the future? Right. Yes, it's a great question, both good and bad. And, and while I don't have a crystal ball, my personal belief is, and, and people I talk to and the people I speak to at the, you know, uh, Regional Planning Commission, you know, is the economy gonna soften? Yes. Uh, will there be problems with banks? Might be, you know, um, what's gonna happen uh, with interest rates? You know, right now, we're, we're doing pretty well on our investments, but that interest rate we think is at its peak and it's gonna come down. Are, are we gonna have to borrow money? The economy gets worse. Uh, those are the types of things that we have to plan for. We can't say they're gonna happen for sure, but I, I think we're at that point, we, we know now we're not gonna be getting the federal and the state funds like we are. Uh, we know that the general revenue sharing of five hundred and sixty-six thousand is certainly nice to get, but we expect it a lot more. GAM, you know, that reduction in what? They lost seven hundred thousand dollars in what they got from this.
Make a report on that.
Yeah, those are the types of things that we have to be prepared for. You know, and so we always keep something in reserve, but um, you know, so the economy, you think of the housing crisis, how can this county continue to grow if we can't build enough houses? Uh, we're doing the wage study because if we can't pay people to work here in our county, we lose them to someone else. Will those people go to other counties, even in the private sector? On the other hand, uh, I think we've seen some pretty good trends in businesses that are moving into the area. I still, when I was with the EDC, the last five years of the decade, our population was actually trending down and getting older faster. And I think with COVID and some other things, I saw the last couple of years, we came back up and actually ended the decade with some positive growth. So I think there are some signs that say we're gonna see some vitality, which is gonna help us. Uh, but we also have to be aware that it's gonna be tougher in the next few years, I think.
It's, um, does the wage study results go to gen gov or will we see it at some point? Will you come back to us with that?
Yes, we will do that. And, and it didn't come as fast as we wanted. We got a general overview of it. We have some general uh, conclusions, but broad conclusions. Now we can, but now they're gonna come back and say specifically, here's what it, you know, here's what it will do. What we haven't determined yet is what actions we will take. For example, you know, some people may say, give everybody a raise. We're not gonna do that, right? You have to, we have the budget for it. So we may have to decide what we're going to affect this year, what we're going to affect next year and into the future. So we just don't have enough information yet to say what that is.
But you'll come to us at some point or somebody will.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thanks.
Vince, do you have a sense of when that timeline is and how it intersects with our budget conversation?
Yeah, we're, we're really making some assumptions for a budget. It won't be in time for the budget, but I think in October, November timeframe, we'll be able to start formulating what's the best approach. We'll stay within our budget for twenty twenty-four. And probably more changes will be in twenty twenty-five. I mean, I can tell you that in general, we found some, and I, you know, they probably don't want me to talk about this too much, but it, sometimes in some of our new hires, the be, the opening wage might be a little low in some cases. Whereas some in the middle ranges and higher ranges are adequately paid. Now that's a gross generalization. Uh, so we're looking at that and say, okay, what happens when you raise the uh, the starting wage? And the people who've been here three or four years say, hey, now they're making as much as me and I've been here three, four years, I want one, you know, so we have to, to figure all of those things out and uh, assess what the best strategy is. And we'll be able to say with to you, here's how we compare to other counties and the types of jobs. Yeah, so. I'll move on then to the budget update. Here's where we are, nine nineteen. I was busy last January, by the way, I was working here. The uh, fiscal twenty-four budget overview, that's what this is, just kind of a general overview. You guys have been hearing this in your committees to a certain extent, but I'm, we're getting closer. And Don has done a great job of pushing me, pushing the other directors, and they've been great at responding to getting the information in so we can get this to you sooner. Okay, even one of the next slide. Current themes, twenty-four uh, expenses except for healthcare inflationary pressures have moderated. We've seen that of late, that's a, that's a good thing. Still, wages will increase. Uh, we also have some uncertainties regarding the WPPA negotiations, that, that's the uh, the deputies. In terms of healthcare, uh, that's a cost that continues to go up and we're looking at it from a variety of different ways. Can we change our health plan? Yes. You gotta be careful how you do that. Uh, I think we can do it in ways that are really, it's gonna be a win-win, things that we need to change uh, to help, things like reducing emergency room visits when they're not needed. Finding the best uh, person to do a procedure or an operation also gives an economic benefit back to the employee. Uh, you know, we're finding that there's a wide, wide uh, variation in what what is charged by different health clinics and health systems and so on. And so we are going to be better at finding where people can go and help counseling them on how they get better healthcare. We'll be doing those types of things. Terms of revenues, again, we don't expect the federal dollars, no more ARPA. So, you know, we, we can't count on that money. And, and you saw in that general fund, those years where we had that money coming in, our general fund benefited. The levy continues to be flat, it'll always be flat, right? Or pretty close, I'll show you some more information on that. Sales tax projections. It continues to go up and that's a great thing, you know, that helps us. There might be very, a variety of reasons for that. I can tell you that uh, Don and I have discussed this at length. The uh, projections and our budget uh, expectations are getting closer and closer. You know, it used to be that was always a little bit of fluff. We could say, okay, we'll make four million, knowing that we might get four point three million. And that's three hundred thousand dollars, we, you know, kind of a cushion. We're actually getting closer and closer now. We're trying to be more exact. As we get tighter in meeting our budget, we're, we're, we're being more exact. And I'll show you a graph that demonstrates that. Shared revenue I mentioned, nice to have, we thought it would be more. The bottom line is, when you see that general fund go up, we still have to remain fiscally conservative. It's, it's, it's the taxpayers' money and we need, you know, we don't wanna get so much that it's unreasonable, but we also have to be prepared for those times and for those issues that really need funded. Uh, let's look at the next slide, our pie, pie charts, which are always great, right? Big picture revenue sources. I don't know if you can read all this, but the general thing is we get about twenty three This is from fiscal year twenty three from general, general property tax. Now, you all know that's flat unless there are some things that can change it like net new construction, which has been around three hundred thousand dollars a year that it goes up. Sales tax helps, and then also that can be changed if we borrow money, which we do. We pay off that debt at about two point four million a year, so that gets added, that's added into that levy. If we don't borrow, that levy amount comes down that much, so that is involved in that. You can see there the other big thing, state aid, seventeen million dollars. Those are grants, shared revenue, you know, I think Mo gets a lot of that money, right? Your shared revenue for for highways. You can, you can see the various things in there, but general property tax is the biggest. Then you get into state aid, public charges for services. Clerk, treasurer, register of deeds, court probate, passport, all those fees add up. We do a lot of services that that people have to pay for. So that's just what the revenue looks like. You can see there fiscal twenty three revenues at about sixty seven and a half million dollars. If you go to the next slide, that just shows you the flat levy. We've gone from twenty one to twenty four, we've gone from twenty two four to twenty three one. So that's net new construction each year. Sales tax stays relatively flat. So when we have a budget, okay, and and wages go up five percent or whatever they go up, we've got to pay that. But you see our levy doesn't go up that much. So that's where we have to find new revenues, cut expenses do other things to make sure we get there. Next slide, this shows you the sales tax over the years, and this has been the fun thing. I know when Don and I get this report sent us on a monthly basis, we're, oh yeah, keep going. You know, it's this money that's coming in to help us with our tax burden, so to speak. And the darker blue is the actual funds. The light blue is what we budget. We don't wanna budget more than we get, right? Because then it's like, whoops, we're in a hole. That's when you get deficits, right? But you can see we're we're getting a little more aggressive. That, those two lines are starting to converge there towards the end. Because the budgets are getting tighter and so we're, you know, I'm yelling at Don saying, no, we got we gotta pay for this stuff, add more in there. So hopefully we'll be, you know, it'd be nice if we could always gauge it perfectly each year, but you can't, you know, so you're you're, you put a little cushion in there. Next, next slide is our expense categories. You can see personnel is thirty two point six mil, point seven million dollars. That's forty six percent. With that comes, you know, a lot of good work. We got a lot of mandated things and it takes people to do those types of things. Service fixed charges. Again, what I point out to you is the expenses, total seventy one point three five four million dollars. So may remember what our revenues were? Sixty seven point four five. So we're short about four million. May know why that's different? When we came in with a budget, balanced budget last year, and then we said, what else is important? We said we want the roof, we want the recycling center, we had something, and so we took that out of the general fund. That's the only way we could pay for it. But that was from the surplus general fund. So you know, I'm the conservative guy, right? When I go into that budget, I wanna make sure we're balanced. But I wanna make sure that you guys have your say on where you spend their money. Those are great things that we did. But we always like to plan those things in advance. It's it's, it's never a, I don't think it's a good thing to say, hey, what if we spend it on this too? And you think about it last minute, you think, my guys, we've been working on this budget for six months. And, you know, we hope that November fourteenth is the day that we don't hear about it for the first time. Because we try to make sure that we come in with a balanced budget each year. Next slide, every, every year besides the normal budget, we collect additional funding requests from each of the directors, the committees have a chance to say, hey, have you thought about this? Put in some requests. That's too small to read. Purpose is not to read it now. You will get a look at that in your committee meetings coming up and then at the board meeting, and that's just some of them. The one number down here at the bottom is one point five million dollars. Right now, that looks like in those additional funding requests are things that may not be covered, right, by our normal revenue. So the option may be two options. One would be those are important things that I provisionally would say yes to. I think we need them, we need to do it. But we may look at two things. One, do we bond for it? Or two, do we look at the surplus from two thousand twenty two, which was five point six man or five point five million, half of which would be surplus that we could use. So if we had a surplus of use two point five million, obviously, we could take and pay for the one point five million there. So that's something a choice you guys will have. And I think both choices are good, but there might be some benefits of one or the other, and we'll discuss that in the coming month. Okay, getting close to the end here, let back the last slide. Prior to October seventeenth, when we come into the committees, if the committees have any other recommendations or or things you wanna discuss, now's the time to do it. The countywide revenues will be solidified. There are still, we don't know what the exact levy will be. We don't know the sales tax estimate, the the outside funding, all those things are gonna be coming in here rapidly, right before the budget is due. But we're getting close. Countywide expenses will be more solidified. We'll have, you know, more information and we'll decide on our COLA merit increases, we'll finalize our benefits, FTEs. And then we'll also work on our CIP, our capital improvement plan. So all those things are coming together here in this next month, and so at the committee meetings, and then in October is when we really get into it and you can debate, you know, kind of the decisions that have been made and make any recommendations at that time. And then after that, we meet in November. We use that October meeting, take that information, put it in resolution format. And then November, we have a public hearing and vote on the budget then.
Amen.
The ARPA funds at a drop dead date. We know where we're at as to what we actually sign to.
I think we've got that number. We we, it it, ARPA has gone away, so, but how much of that money has been used or not used on a specific project? I think, Don, do you know the exact number or about?
What I can say is that all of the ARPA dollars that were remaining have been moved to the general fund. That was noted in the, in the audit, and so that, there, there's no ARPA dollars. Proper perspective remaining. They're all in the general fund. So the administrator showed the slide where there was a thirty two million dollar general fund balance roughly, sixteen million reserved, roughly eight committed, and then eight available. There are some commingled ARPA dollars in that eight million.
So the only concern I have is I know they had a date they had to be used by.
That's all solved. We don't want.
No, yeah, we're good. Remember, we, it's that term of or concept of we lost revenue because of COVID. We demonstrated that, and so they forget, they basically said, now you can use it as you wish.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is litigation update. Or recruitment process, yeah. I guess.
This is Kim.
She can fill us in.
As a presentation.
So for some of you, if I haven't met you yet, I'm Kim Greger, the HR director, been here since January. These nice folks have decided to let me come on board. And my biggest priority has been to stabilize the workforce, more engaged, and to hopefully get ahead of kind of that free falling. So Claire, if you can move forward. Some of you, they get to see my HR dashboard last time. You can see we have made improvements. I just wanna point out that we've decreased the amount of time it takes us to send an offer out by three days. We're hiring from job posting to hire. That's decreased by seven days. And folks are starting on average four days faster than they were previously. So we were looking at a two week period. We're now looking at a ten day period. So the team is very excited. We've put a lot of work into this, and we've done a lot of partnership with the division directors to try to help us make those improvements. And this is not just an HR initiative. This is definitely a team initiative. If you can do next slide. I just wanna point out about retention. Vince kind of brought this up a little bit. We are starting to see a stabilization. We are retaining employees at a three point five percent from this time last year. So that means that we're keeping more people here at the county. They're not leaving and going to other places. So we're, I'm very excited about that. That means that we're starting to see some improvement there. People are starting to stay, see the benefits of working for the county.
That doesn't include retirement.
This does not include retirement. So just a quick overview, we are currently eight above where we were at this time last year for twenty twenty two. That means we have eight more employees. Our retention rate did increase three and a half percent. We're hiring seven days faster. So recruiting overall, we are seeing benefits to that. And then I just wanted to highlight performance reviews and are being done electronically. So that means we're using our timekeeping system UKG to do those performance reviews. It's giving us that ability to get them done quicker and get employees that feedback on a more regular basis. And that does mean that we're getting paid to employees done a lot faster. So we're not waiting for a paper process to happen. Told you, really quick, any questions? Well, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
I don't think there's a need to go into closed session. There was a stower hearing set. It's been removed from the calendar at the request of both of the attorneys. But then late this afternoon, there was an email from Judge Black's judicial assistant saying that he had some more questions. So it might be put back on. If not, there's two hearings scheduled for next week. Both of them are by Zoom. If anybody would like the Zoom instruction so they can listen in, I can certainly share that. So that's where the stower litigation, the other big litigation is the Wisconsin Realtors Association. We have a hearing October fourth, I believe, beginning of October, I believe it's the fourth. The county's motion to dismiss based upon our argument that the WRA lacks standing. Since we filed that motion, they amended their initial pleadings, their initial complaint to add information to try to bolster their claim that they have standing. Whichever way it goes, if we win, great. If we don't, then we'll carry on. Having said that, the exec, excuse me, the Environmental Services Committee is going to be taking up proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance that might may render moot some of their concerns as it relates at least to tourist rooming houses and a few others. So I'm going to inform opposing counsel of that probably very close to that October fourth date and ask if there, we can do some type of stay in the proceedings while we try to work through things that might alleviate some of their concerns. So those are the two big updates. And again, I don't think there's any reason to go into closed session.
All right. Information reported by the county board chair. Have been none. Administrator.
I do have one.
I know you do.
Okay, for the Polk County Housing Authority, we have a nominee recommended by the executive director. And replacing Mark Kopp, who has resigned, is Angela Anderson. She has experience in the Housing Authority down in Osceola, highly recommended by Jennifer. So that is who we have nominated for that position.
Do we take motion to approve this?
Yes.
Motion made in the second to approve Angela Anderson, Polk County Housing Authority. Any questions? All in favor? Now you want my report? Well, I'm gonna advocate my time to Johnny because he's got some pretty interesting information from the Wisconsin Counties Association is in his efforts to push resolutions from Polk County with our interest involved, and I think we should we should all know what's, what's happening down there. We've been remiss in that over the years, and we didn't even know they existed, I don't think, for a long time, but we're aware of it now and they're aware of us. So I'm gonna take my time for that with supervisors' report. We'll start with John and
These are, these are things you have to know because everybody, all you supervisors are gonna get some questions. As far as I know, in the history of Polk County, and certainly not in my last twenty years, we've never got a resolution passed by the State Assembly. And I presented in July at the Steering Committee, five resolutions. And from the Steering Committee, they went to the, our, our attorney, took them to the Board of Directors. The Board of Directors passed all five of them on to the General Assembly. So our General Assembly started at one o'clock on, on Sunday. There was forty resolutions, and my God, I just can't believe this. All five of our resolutions got passed without one descending vote. And all the resolutions didn't get passed from, from these forty. But that is a total testimony for the department heads and the people that work for Polk County. Now, just, just think of how important this is. The first one, resolution number seven, was with our our county nursing home. And there, there, there's so many moving parts of this slate legislature and the politicking that are going on. Last year, we received, the, the nursing home received eight hundred and eleven million or eight hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty five dollars. Right now, and these figures change, there are twenty eight nursing homes out of the seventy two. We lost twenty in the last four years. So what they did, the legislative proposed the same amount of money, but they cut the, just the heart out of the work, out of the nursing homes that were either breaking even or making money, and we broke even seven years since our new administration. Last year, our nursing home received eight hundred and eleven seven seventy five thousand, and this year, they're estimated at ninety four, ninety four thousand dollars. So that's a loss of seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. And I think that would, in my opinion, that's certainly gonna cull their nursing home. So number, resolution number seven was to reallocate this and at least bring us back so we can operate it, and that passed unanimously. Now, one thing, in all these resolutions, they can't be particular just to your county. But this is a county nursing home, and it can affect everybody. If somebody brings a, a resolution just particular to their county, it's the state throws it out. The next one was a compensation for district attorney. And everybody knows that we've been trying to get like three point something district attorney level in funding, and it's just Malia, what is it, just a little over one? It's never been up to two for funding it.
We have three ADAs. Is that what you're talking about? I'm sorry.
The funding from the state for district attorney. The funding from the state for district attorney.
Right, so.
Anyway, what did what resolution number ten is requesting is a revision of the entry level. To get people to come in to serve as district attorney. Because they're having a hard time for that. So that is number ten. Number fifteen. Tax delinquent property. The state. Gathers up most of that information and we need, if we're going to collect that tax. Delinquent property, we should get our fair share of it. I mean, these things just make sense. Why it hasn't happened before. But thanks, thanks to our staff. See, the last one. Was a budgetary surplus for maintenance and a replacement of money for our. Trunk highway system. We just, and Steve and you guys know that, we just don't get enough funding from the state for our highway. That's a. Just things that really, to me, make common sense. And thanks to our staff. And I just made the presentation. Our General Assembly started at one o'clock on Sunday. And we got all them passed on Sunday afternoon. It was just, it was just a great, great learning. It's been, I don't know what goes on as far as all you folks. On what's on the media or whatever, but just. What we need to do is contact our legislature. We'll never get this, never get this money for Golden Age. And we just can't afford to let that. It's just unfair, but that's the way politics work. Contact your legislature and say, hey. The this will be in the legislative bill and we need some more. Thanks, thanks for everybody.
Thanks, John. Appreciate your efforts, believe me. Any other supervisors have anything they'd like to announce?
Kind of something similar to John. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead. You're on.
My day job is I write curriculum for a nonprofit that we provide free curriculum for personal finance teachers. In high schools. So teaching kids about banking, investing, taxes, insurance. Things like that, paying for college, trying to just make them good financial stewards. And the guy who runs the organization that I work for also did a lot of lobbying in Wisconsin here and was a big part of. The State Senate this last week passing a bill to guarantee a one semester course. For financial literacy for high school graduation. So something cool for a lot of. Everybody in here, all the students in in our schools, potentially, if the governor signs it into law. Well, it'll be a requirement for students to have that one semester of financial literacy. So hopefully getting some some future. Future financial wizards.
Thank you.
Okay, I forgot, I forgot one. There was one more resolution. And that was, I think it was drawn up by our sheriff department. And all the way particularly like from Bayfield, our outside perimeter counties. Our volunteer fire and EMDs and that they're merging and. And closing up and everything. So our county proposed thirty-three and a half cents per capita. Per person in the county. Out of the reserve fund. We got a seven billion dollar reserve fund. And and so that was kind of obvious to pass. And so that was that was the fifth resolution.
Now, we're going to continue with supervisors. Anybody else have anything to say? Because I wanted purposely left the best for last. If anybody notices, I missed the administrative.
It happens.
I think that's be a good ending. The only thing better than that is the.
Are we ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
I only have one item on my administrator's report regarding the recruitment of my replacement. And to that, I will defer to Ms. Malone, who will update the board on on what the executive committee has decided.
And I apologize, when I saw the agenda item about update on recruitment. I thought that was my time to say something. And so when when Kim got up, and I think that was great information. I just didn't realize that I wasn't separately on the agenda. Having said that, the executive committee narrowed down the choices. There are three choices. Our hope is, and by our hope, it's not my hope, the executive committee kicked me. Out of a closed session. And I'm really emotionally okay. Anyway, I digress. So.
The power of the.
I know, I know, it was great. It was all his idea too. Anyhow, they narrowed it down to three. I think their goal is to have all three come for an interview in front of the whole board prior to next month's county board meeting. With a half hour each. And what I heard was, and correct me if I'm wrong, those of you on the committee. There would be a brief amount of time for the candidates to present the information, why they want the job, why they think they would be the right fit. And then there would be time for Q and A. And it would be one at a time. And then you'd have your full county board meeting, whether you made made a decision that night. Obviously, there's no rush. Because Vince is going to stay here for a very long time. Or if you wanted to engage in some type of a vote. You know, there's three candidates. So, you know, staff would certainly recommend not saying we're going to vote once and then give it to the person who gets the most votes. Just in case nobody gets a majority and that might be a little awkward. So we could certainly help you with the process if you wanted. The deliberations can be in closed session. If you don't want me in your closed session, I would suggest having Joe Loso in the closed session. Just because of the nature of the stuff you're going to be discussing. And I won't take any offense to that because obviously whoever is hired would be my direct supervisor. So I I completely understand. Needing a little distance there. But I would just recommend having somebody from our office in there for that.
And Vince didn't reconsider?
I've been begging.
I make a motion to adjourn.
The, as far as. We did want to emphasize the fact that there were about nine or. Ten applications. And we made the decision. Because we had the three that applied from the county themselves were all excellently qualified. There was no reason for us to go outside, then reward reward the people that have been dedicated to us in the. In the past. So that will be our choice from one of the re-employed.
Good news. Were the other seven outside? Were there just three internally?
We we just took the three inside to consider. We didn't do anything with the other ones.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. Were there all seven other ones?
Yeah.
So there are no internal ones that didn't.
Any second for the adjournment?
Did we decide, will the interviews be closed session with the board or open? Did we decide that? I I mean, you could do it either way. Certainly, I think the deliberations should be. Yes, agree. In in closed session, once you're talking about the meat of what you heard. The problem with having it in an open session, because I certainly think bargaining reasons why you might want to have it in closed session. But then the other candidates that haven't interviewed left yet could come in and listen. Now, you could say, hey, if you come in and listen. We're going to count that against you. So please be respectful so that you could have it in an open session.
I'd recommend closed session.
Whole procedure in closed session. Everything will be done in a closed session. The the presentation by the. The applicants and the considerations and the voting will all be done in closed session.
And then if you want Mr. Lozo. Instead of me, that's fine. And then I'll make him handle the whole county board meeting and I'll take the night off.
What do we need an attorney for?
Yeah, would four o'clock work to bring in? Would you guys all be willing to come here?
On the day of the board.
This would be the day of the regular board.
I think if you allow a half an hour, a few steps, pretty.
Could you appear by?
Does it have to be a quarter?
Well, here's the thing, you're going, if you decide to vote that night.
You can do that in the meeting.
Yeah. But I mean, one vote. Could make a huge difference.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, let me, I'll I'll see. Everybody I work with is in California and once a year they get us together for one week to work together. It's that week.
Well, we got to get it done.
I should be, I'll just see what I can move, like, I'll just see if I can. Am I able to do that?
And again, that you guys might not vote. You might decide. Because you you have some time to make a decision. Since they're all internal candidates, there's no concern that, well. This outside candidate is going to take a different job if we wait until November. But certainly by December, you have to decide. That's that's the bottom line. So you could vote that night and and.
There is. I'm going to have a second. All right, we've got a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor? Same sign.